Hello and welcome to Ward Talk, CTN's look at the political scene in Ann Arbor. I'm your host, Bonnie Gabowitz. We'll be discussing issues and solutions with the city council members from our five wards each month. Joining us this month is Dharma Ackman from Ward 4. Welcome. It's been awhile since I've seen you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for having me. I think it's been about a year.
Right. And as always, we have topics that are continuing to be discussed and occasionally we have new topics.
Yeah.
But let's just start with Ward 4 and find out what's going on specifically with Ward 4.
Yeah, so the couple of things that come to mind is we've got some major construction projects. And it's funny because I feel like I said the same thing last year. We must talk during construction season. But right now, we've got a major project going on on South 7th over by the elementary school. And we have one on Greenview project. And those are both water main projects as well as major road reconstruction projects. I actually live near Greenview, so it's like right in my backyard. It's pretty disruptive.
So is that going on at the same time?
They are. So it's Greenview from Stadium all the way, actually all the way, well, the part at Sio Church, that project stops there. And then it continues on the other side of Sio Church, that part of Greenview, and then South 7th. So, you know, there's big heaps of dirt. It looks like a bomb went off. But I think people are really looking forward to the fact because especially Greenview has been in quite bad condition for a long time. It's also a very wide road as originally constructed and it's straight.
And it's also a busy road because there's a school in the neighborhood.
Yeah, South 7th can be a little bit busy. Greenview can be a little bit busy because it's a cut through that people use as an alternative to 7th, which has traffic lights. But there's no stops in between Sio Church and Stadium as it exists now. And with it being very, very wide, people tend to speed. They did a speed study to look, you know, at kind of before and after they do their treatments. And, you know, there are people that were going close to 40 miles an hour. And this is a 25 mile an hour zone where people have kids, you know, it's residential street. And, you know, people don't want people speeding down the middle of the road and it's not safe. So they're narrowing the road quite a bit. They're bringing the curbs in. So that narrowing will help with the speed because it's kind of a visual indicator to be a little bit more careful, not treat it like a dragway. And also widening some of the sidewalks, creating facilities so that it's a little bit more welcoming to people walking and biking.
What about bike lanes?
No specific bike lanes. Usually the type of bike treatment that they put is dictated by the volume of traffic, the prevailing speed of traffic, and things like that. And because these are relatively low trafficked roads in terms of cars, you don't need something like a separated bike lane. So what we're trying to do is be really contextual about what we do, putting the right kind of facilities in the right places. But it is part of our All Ages, All Abilities Network, so we do want to make sure that it's safe and comfortable for everybody who's using it.
And is there any construction going on, building or construction?
So, well, of course, there is the new university dorms. That is at the very edge of Ward 4, down by the old Finger Lee lumber yard. And I actually see that from, that construction going on from my work window as well. And so that's a big deal, obviously. We also just approved a development called Five Corners that's at the corner of Packard State. And I can't remember the third road, the third road that intersects, but a big student-oriented development. And so bringing a lot of housing to the ward potentially.
Well, is this housing development being built by a private corporation?
It is.
It's not the university's property?
Correct, correct. So the university is building its own dorm facilities also in Ward 4. And this is a private development that's going on. Yep.
So, okay. And I understand that we have a lot going on with the voting. We have elections coming up. Although this is the beginning of summer, we want to make sure that people are updated with their connection with being able to have a ballot.
Yeah.
And make sure that they're, they know where to go for voting if they're voting in person.
Absolutely.
Yep. And there are also some ballot measures that I think you were particularly interested in making sure that people knew about.
Yeah, these are in November, but they're a big deal. So I think that they're worth talking about now, even though it's a, you know, a little ways away. One, we're asking voters to renew our parks millage. And we're asking them to renew it for a period of two years at the same rate that they have funded, I think, for the last five years. We've done it in five-year increments. Now we're asking for a 20-year continuation of that millage to help fund park maintenance as well as capital improvements.
Is there, does it show that there's an increase in the use of parks? I know we have a lot of parks.
We do have a lot of parks.
Like 159 parks?
60-something, I think. 168 it might be.
So is there more, is there additional usage in the park where it requires more maintenance or it's just regular?
Well, I think it's more the fact that we have a lot of capital maintenance, things that need to be done. Of course, you have to maintain the facilities that you have. One example being the West Park Band Shell that I think had to be closed down in 2021 because it's crumbling and it needs fixing. We know that the ice skating rink at one of our parks needs, I think the coils updated. I mean, it's very old infrastructure. We also want to increase the accessibility of our parks, and that's going to require quite a bit of money. We are doing a complete capital evaluation right now. So I think that that's also why, you know, there was not a desire to increase the amount, even though we know that the current amount isn't even really enough for what we have to fund right now.
But your concern is that people will support this effort, so you want to keep it within a range that people are comfortable with?
Yeah, exactly. Based on what we know now. And we know that, you know, I know personally and I know from talking to people, the parks are one of our crown jewels. I think it's something that people in Ann Arbor really value. Most people live very close to a park. I think that that's very important, too. And we want to make sure that we can continue to provide good park services.
Great. Let's talk about...
There was a second ballot measure.
Okay.
Do you mind if I talk about that?
Oh, okay.
Okay. So the second thing that's going to appear on the November ballot is for a city-run sustainable energy utility. And this is important for supporting the city's carbon neutrality goals. And to be clear, what voters would be asked to do is to authorize establishing the sustainable energy utility so that we make investments in local renewable energy that would supplement DTE's infrastructure. And so to be clear, this is not a new tax. This would be an opt-in for folks if we pass this ballot measure, and it would be a fee-based service for doing things like solar panels, for having microgrids in neighborhoods between homes, and for creating more resilience, too.
And I understand that you have a long-term contract with DTE for its services and that stays in place, correct?
Yeah, that is the situation, the legal situation right now. We're definitely exploring full municipalization, but that's not what this ballot measure is. This is separate and supplementary.
Separate.
Yep.
Okay. And in terms of transportation, I know that we have increased bus service now between Ypsilanti and Ann Arbor to help facilitate workforce people coming in and get working in our, in all the establishments we have. So that's already started, correct?
It has, yeah. And I've got colleagues at work. I haven't been able to take it yet. I'm lucky enough to live two miles from where I work. But I know people that have taken it and they said it's a lot faster, maybe half the time to get between the two cities.
Because it doesn't have as many stops.
Correct. Yeah, it only has maybe one or two. So it's very, much quicker. And that can be a very slow corridor.
Yeah, great.
Yeah.
So that's improvement. Let's talk about, we had funds that were supposed to be used to help us get in place a crisis response so that police aren't called to deal with certain situations that other organizations could help out with.
Yep.
And I understand that the project kind of got stalled when the city decided that what was offered wasn't exactly what you really wanted. So it was back to the, you know, the table.
Yeah.
But if I understand it, the funds are going to run out. There's a certain timeframe you had to spend money.
Yeah.
So tell us a little bit more about that.
Yeah, happy to. So as part of our ARPA allocations, the American Rescue Funds Act, we had dedicated, I think, three and a half million dollars to standing up unarmed response, something that was, you know, definitely a priority of residents. I think it has something like upwards of 70% support, very important to city council members, and some money to get this started. That money has to be allocated by the end of this year, which would mean that we would need to be ready to go with a program. Unfortunately, we have had two failed RFP, Request for Proposal, attempts. On the first one, we had one applicant. It did not meet kind of some of the requirements that the city has to obey to stand up a city program. We released a new RFP, hoping to be a little bit clearer with respect to what some of the boundaries were. And unfortunately, we got no responses to that one. So it's a very disappointing setback. And it means that these funds, unless they're spent, are going to have to be returned. And we don't want that because we know that the city has a lot of priority things that need, you know, money. So we do have something on the upcoming agenda to reallocate those funds. We have not given up unarmed response. However, we do have to take a step back and look at what successful programs in other cities look like and, you know, what we can do and how we can be successful going forward.
Okay, so this will definitely be something we'll want to keep watching.
Definitely.
Right.
Yep. And we did, you know, a good thing is that we got money from the state for unarmed response, too. They also know this is an important priority for us. And we're expected to accept some grant funds from them soon because they knew we had intended to. So again, I just want to emphasize that we have not dropped this, that I think it's important to everybody on council. We know people are watching and wanting this to happen. Unfortunately, it's taking a bit more than we expected, but it's really important to do it right, so.
Do you know if the police force has been increased lately?
No, it hasn't. We've been pretty level, but the challenge has been filling vacancies. So I would say that we're not fully staffed, but that is not for lack of budget. That is just, it's very challenging to hire people. We recently got a new chief. I do see a lot of new energy there, a lot of positivity and kind of orienting a little bit differently. And, you know, I think that they've been working really hard at recruitment and we hope to see those positions filled.
Okay. And just to mention that we have two new roundabouts that are going to be developed in continuing to try to improve our safety.
Yeah.
And I just want to mention, one is Pontiac Trail and Duveren, and another Pontiac Street Moore and Longshore Drive. And we're at the point now where you're looking into having some engineer-designed services. So this is just the beginning of the project.
Yeah.
But in general, it looks like the city has really expanded the roundabouts for purposes of slowing down traffic and making sure it flows smoothly and is safer.
Exactly. Roundabouts have huge safety impacts. We know that the severity of crashes decreases and dramatically so. So in Carmel, Indiana, they actually had a mayor that was very gung-ho on putting roundabouts everywhere. I think they have something like 150. And they have seen huge impacts to the numbers of crashes and serious crashes. So they really are a safety measure. And yeah, I just look forward to seeing more safety measures around town.
Do you know if the city is looking at increasing more bike lanes? Or is that pretty much finished?
Oh, not finished at all. Absolutely. So we have a whole network in our comprehensive transportation plan that was adopted just a couple of years ago. It calls for adding, I think, something like five lanes of the All Ages, All Abilities Network a year. We are definitely behind. We have some that have been painted, but they haven't been posted yet with the delineators. And I can't remember what the completion is expected to be in terms of mileage. But really where we're at now is I think we have pretty good coverage in the city core, and we need much better coverage out into the neighborhoods.
Okay. When we come back from our break, we're going to continue talking about some of the items that the city is working on and check on the progress.
Great.
We want to hear from you, so please email us questions to ctn@a2gov.org or tweet us at hashtag CTNAnnArbor. We're taking a break now and we'll be coming back with more from Ward Talk.
What if the city of Ann Arbor created a reliable, 100% clean, affordable, locally-built, and community-owned energy utility? The city is looking to do just that by creating the Ann Arbor Sustainable Energy Utility, or SEU, a community-owned energy utility that provides electricity from local solar and battery storage systems installed on homes and businesses throughout the city. Learn more and share your thoughts on the proposed sustainable energy utility by going
I'm Dana Denha, host of Ann Arbor's news magazine program, FYI. Tune in every week for new episodes featuring a variety of topics on the city and county.
Hi, this is Bonnie Gabowitz. We're here at Ward Talk. We're speaking with Ward 4 council member, Dharma Ackman. We've been talking about your particular ward. We've also been talking about the whole city, but we still have more to talk about.
Yeah, there's more going on.
So let's just talk about the big topic that comes up every month, and that's affordable housing. Because there's always something new that's happening or there's an update.
Yeah.
And I know that the city has its own buildings that are optional to use for affordable housing. So give us an update on that.
Yeah, I'm excited to do so because I remember the last time we talked, me saying that this doesn't move fast enough. And indeed, that's still the case, but I'm happy that I actually have substantive updates. So one is the Catherine Street project, which is now being called Dunbar Tower. We actually broke ground on that, or the Ann Arbor Housing Commission did, just a couple of months ago. And as a reminder, that's going to be 63 apartments for low-income residents, as well as low-income people who work in creative industries. And it's also going to have a maker space to support entrepreneurship among BIPOC communities. And that's expected to be done at the end of 2025, was the last update that we got. So that's exciting. The other hot-off-the-press news is the old Y lot at 350 South 5th. It was just announced that the Ann Arbor Housing Commission is going to co-develop this site with a group that they selected from an RFP process that happened last year. And that group's called Related Midwest. The plans call for about 260 to 300 units. A minimum of 100 of those are going to be available for those that are making 60% and below the average median income, with other, the other units for people who are moderate income. And so that one's slated to start in 2026. I'm sure we're going to hear, be hearing more about that. I think I just saw the article in Cranes a couple of days ago. So things are happening and it's exciting to see.
And are there any areas that was being considered for affordable housing that is now being turned into a commercial, a commercial situation?
Well, not yet. We do have something on the upcoming agenda to look at the Klein lot. That is the lot that sits between Ashley and Main. That site was considered to be a public lot that should be looked at for affordable housing. It's a very big and challenging site, which I have discussed with Jennifer Hall, the director of the Ann Arbor Housing Commission. And so now we're trying to engage in a process of taking it to a bond broker, or sorry, just a broker, to think about how this might be developed by a private developer. I think all of us think that it could be put to much better use than a surface parking lot. It's kind of a shame to have a surface parking lot that huge in the center of your downtown. And so I think...
Well, especially where, from what I understand, the city is looking to grow up.
Yes.
To have higher density and, you know, more floors in a building so that we have more density.
Absolutely.
In a small area.
Yeah, I mean, it's a corollary of the Green Belt Program that we passed almost 20 years ago, where we basically said that we did not want to live in a community that had sprawl. You know, if you don't want sprawl, then you have to build denser in the places where people are already living and working. And Ann Arbor is an old city, you know, in terms of US cities. And so we don't have a lot of vacant land. We need to think about how to put the land we do have to, you know, the most effective use. And again, I would argue that a surface parking lot that big in the center of a downtown is, it's a waste of space. And, you know, I think we also have to make the point that, you know, the taxes that we have on parcels also drives our affordable housing millage and how much money we have in that. And our tax base depends upon having property that's generating revenue. And yeah, that needs to be looked at.
Right. As a matter of fact, there's one, I don't, I'm not sure where, what property it was, but there was $18.5 million that would go to the city from developers once the building is built, that would go into the city's funds for more affordable housing.
That's not ringing any bells. I mean, I do know that the estimated, do you remember what property that is?
Yeah, no, I didn't write it down.
Okay.
But that was sometime in the future.
Yeah.
But the idea that developers come in and they contribute a certain amount of money towards the city's goals in affordable housing.
Yeah, I mean, there's kind of two situations where that happens. So when people do a planned unit development, which is a special zoning category, they are required to contribute to the affordable housing fund or create the units themselves. We prefer that they contribute the money because our Ann Arbor Housing Commission can do more to leverage those dollars with other funding to build more units. So that's one way. But the other way is just through tax revenue. We all are paying towards the affordable house, affordable housing millage with our property taxes. And so, you know, every time, for example, that the university takes something off of our tax rolls, that's a hit, not only to affordable housing funds, but also parks funds, also, you know, our roads, everything like that. So these are things that we have to balance.
Is there anything else you wanted to cover with the affordable housing?
No, I think that's it.
Because I wanted to mention that we do have a new rule that's now in place, and it has to do with the gas leaf blowers, just to mention.
Yeah.
That, that's been phased in as a four-month prohibition, not all year round, but for now.
Yeah.
Four months.
Yeah.
And then eventually in time, it will become an all-year rule.
Yep. So we're trying to phase it in. It would go into full effect January 1st, 2028. Right now, like you said, we're taking a seasonal approach where they cannot be used between June 1st, gas-powered, again, I want to emphasize, between June 1st and October 1st.
So what happens if someone's using the gas-powered machines?
Yeah.
So what happens?
Yeah, well, they can get ticketed. So like any other community standards offense, so other examples in that category would be not cleaning your sidewalk of snow in a timely fashion, or having things overgrowing on the sidewalk. It does rely on people reporting the problem. We don't have officers patrolling the city, monitoring whether people are following our community standards ordinances. So this would be an example of that. I mean, the first time, it's a smaller ticket, then subsequent tickets get larger, you know. But I think what we're seeing is people are really stepping up to the plate. I checked in with my own landscaping company, of course, wanting to make sure that they were going to be ready to follow this law come June 1st. And they've really embraced the fact that they care about Ann Arbor's values and that holding to this law isn't just a matter of following the law, but it's a matter of kind of being part of a community. And, you know, I think the noise is the most obvious factor that drives people a little bit nuts. But this also has huge environmental impacts. And we know that the technologies are on the market and they're going to continue to get better.
And I think it really helped that this was discussed, I know I discussed this with the mayor back in December, that this was coming up, so there was no sudden change that they all of a sudden had to rush out and figure out what to do.
Yeah.
So, and instead of using the gas-powered machines, they're using what, electrical?
Electric. Correct. Yep.
Okay. Okay. So let's just talk about the trunk line transfer. I know that was an important topic for you.
Yeah, so we have a number of roads that go through our city that are owned by the state of Michigan.
I believe four major streets.
Yeah, yep. Washtenaw, Huron, North Main Street, and I always manage to forget the fourth. But the point being is they control these roads. They're responsible for upgrades to the roads.
Plus the speed limit, correct?
Yeah, yep. And often, the city finds itself in the position of having a different sense of the values that should be in the road design. And we've had a number of really serious crashes to fatalities on some of these roads. They tend to be many lanes. They tend to not really be taking into account other modes of travel besides car.
And would you say there's been an increase in bike accidents as well?
There hasn't been an increase. I mean, there's been a decrease overall.
Oh, really?
At the city, or a flattening, especially among pedestrians. But what we're seeing is that the serious accidents are mostly happening on these kinds of roads. And these aren't the only ones, but they're happening on multi-lane roads that have a lot of traffic. And so the idea is, should Ann Arbor take these roads over, we would be responsible for their upkeep, but we would also have more control over their design. The state would be giving us money to do that because we would be taking a responsibility. And that is like a point of negotiation. So if council decided to move forward with the next step, the next step would be that negotiation. And then I think we would have to see, would they be offering us enough money that we could take care of these roads?
So right now, you're just beginning looking into deciding whether you want to take the studies?
Yeah, the first step was to do a study. So we commissioned a study. The report came back to us. We recently had a work session on it. And it basically kind of quantifies the costs and benefits of business as usual or transfer. And not just in dollars and cents, but also in enhanced safety and protection of life.
And what is your estimate of timeframe when this can actually be decided? And, I mean, could it take a year?
I think it's going to be years long. You know, I would think it would be multiple years for it to happen.
Wow.
Yeah. Everything's a long process. But maybe a shorter amount of time than it takes to get them to put in an appropriate crosswalk, yeah.
So in the two minutes we have left, is there anything else you wanted to cover or any committees you're on that you want to mention?
Well, I, you know, I would like to mention my excitement over the Comprehensive Land Use Plan that we're engaged in right now, and that fits with my commission appointment on the Zoning Board of Appeals. That's an interesting board because we get people coming to us for relief from our zoning laws. And you get to see all kinds of ways in which our zoning laws, maybe unintentionally, or they made sense 50 years ago and they don't really make sense now for what we're doing. So examples are setback requirements, minimum lot sizes, things like that, really get in the way of doing some of the things that we say that we value. And so I'm really interested in the Comprehensive Land Use Plan for a number of reasons, but one of the main reasons being, I think we can take a critical look at some of these things and really change the way that we're thinking about some of the requirements and how they mesh with our goals.
And that just shows the city is very dynamic in adjusting to modern-day living as well.
Yeah.
Well, I'd like to thank you for visiting us and catching up on the news.
Yeah, thanks again for having me. Thank you.
Remember to join us for a new episode every month. We want to hear from you, so please email us at ctn@a2gov.org. Attention, Ward Talk. You can also follow CTN and ask questions on Twitter at twitter.com/CTNAnnArbor. We'll make sure to include your questions. To watch this and all of CTN's program, head online to youtube.com/CTNAnnArbor. For Ward Talk, I'm Bonnie Gabowitz. Until next month.